Okay, everybody, thank you for joining us this evening. And we're happy to have you all here with us. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda, second.
We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor of adopting the agenda, please raise your hands. Six oh, yes. Okay, um, next up, can we get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Motion to adopt the consent agenda, second.
A motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda. All of those in favor, please raise your hands. And again, six oh. Board of Ed acknowledgements. Does anybody have anything you'd like to share? Um, okay, I'll go ahead and start with, um, we are doing Employee of the Month now, so that's very exciting. Um, and we have our two recipients, Debbie Hayes and Darvin Willard, which I believe are both here this evening with us. So, um, if you guys would come up, we have a certificate to present to you. And board, would you like to all those stand with them? I guess Laura Lee is going to take a picture. No fun, let's see. Darvin, this is your certificate.
We'll do this, we'll do it up front here.
And Debbie, there you go. Thank you so much. Thank you guys for everything you do for the district, for the students.
Yeah.
What are we gonna do? What are we gonna do? Oh, right here. This is perfect.
Come on in. Come on in.
Yeah, you two in the middle. Give a couple more rumors around the side.
Okay.
And maybe hold your certificate open. There we go. That looks better. There we go. Okay, and can I see everyone's face, not upside down? Okay, I'm gonna take a couple, so one, two, three. Okay, thank you guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Gluski.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Darvin's the gentleman. Thank you. Thank you guys so much.
It's good seeing everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming. Well deserved.
Thank you very much, yes, thank you. Okay, so that was really nice.
Megan, Carrie, kiddos, good seeing everybody.
Thank you guys.
He was their algebra teacher, so.
Oh.
I was.
Some of my babies.
Wonderful. That's a great contribution.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you guys. Thank you. Okay, have any other acknowledgements from the board before we move on to staff? Okay, um, so we'll go ahead with staff whenever you're ready. Whoever wants to volunteer to go first.
I can, I can go first.
Thank you.
Last week, we have our eighth grade elected parent at the high school, so the class of twenty twenty-nine is already starting enrollment process with us. So I might have all those eighth graders up. Uh, the musical was a week ago. I want somebody in there to saw the musical. It was fantastic. Me and I were actually talking about that today. And, and Angelina here, yeah? There's Patrick right there. You guys absolutely crushed your role in the musical. That was nice to see. If you're at the basketball game on Friday night, you saw, uh, two things that were pretty neat. One, Matty Morgan get inducted into the Hall of Fame. The other thing, we did a real quick scholarship acknowledgement for, uh, Caden Worthy and, uh, Ellie Baska. And, uh, I think I shared this previously, but we got to celebrate him at the game. They wrote an essay in the philanthropic group that they wrote, about each got a thousand dollar gift. So Lake Mary Center's ranch got a thousand dollar check that night. And, uh, Two Pink Street High School's got a thousand. That was from the Kansas Public Commission. That's all I had.
Uh, activity wise, our scholar will qualify to go to state, so they will head off this Saturday to go to McPherson. Um, I think there were, in our league, there were three, there's eight or six on this side of the state. It's gotta be eight, right? So there's eight schools that qualified, uh, four A on the east side of state. Three of them were in our league, and we were one of them. So, um, it's a pretty tough competition, um, on this side of state and in our league. Uh, wrestling was at league. Saw Darvin pressure to give him a shout out. Boys won league. They had seven individual champions, and the girls got second, and they had two individual champions. So, um, this weekend, we will be hosting the girls' four A regional for the east side of state. Uh, got thirty-three schools, I don't know, two hundred and some wrestlers coming on Friday, and then again Saturday. Should hopefully the snow be. Not our event, it's KESHA event, so they'll go on with it. So, um, but our girls, we, we have a good shot at qualifying. Quite a number of girls to go out to state tournament. And then our boys regional will be the following week. Clear down in, uh, the Independence, I think, or Coffee, but it is down there. So, um, they're, they'll be heading out there next weekend, so. Now, and if you did come out Friday night, you saw a well-avoided game, double overtime. We had so many chances to win it and just couldn't get done. But, uh, boys played their hearts out. It was, it was one of the better games we've had for a while.
Just plugging along at Sunflower. We started our one school, one book. Um, this year, um, all families have the book, so, um, we hope that all the families are reading it. The kids submit questions, and we drew prizes this morning for the first time, and they were all excited about that. Um, this month, our, um, mindset is live to give, and we've partnered with the Ronald McDonald House. And they did a presentation, so we are collecting pop tabs. There's a class competition, so if you have extra pop tabs and you want to donate to a class, they would love that. Um, we're having SOS come over to talk to our students. And then, um, on the academic side, we had Jayhawk Elementary came to both Cottonwood and Sunflower this morning to observe our all-school intervention programs that we have going, and, um, we're excited to work with them and help them get started in their buildings.
Well, at Cottonwood, we celebrated Kansas Day and the Hundredth Day of school the same day. Because of some snow days, that's how it felt. Uh, students learned about Kansas history, pioneer life, got to make some homemade butter, and it was quite good. Uh, Kindness Week is this week, so our focus on different positive character traits. Today was pay someone a compliment. And so our, our students were very kind to each other and to the staff, and, uh, applauding for that. Also, just to kind of highlight some of the work our social workers doing behind the scenes. Um, she meets with about a hundred and nine students, different students through check-ins, uh, small group resource assistance, some attendance monitoring, and helps to, um, keep them at school and to provide support necessary for that. Has also helped, um, over thirty families with winter coats, hats and gloves, distributing those from donations from the community, and so has coordinated that as well. So just appreciation for her efforts, Erin Hahn's efforts on that as well. So those are some things I copy with this month.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gluski. I got a couple things. So I sent this out to our parents on Friday, but, but last week, we, uh, celebrated the Chiefs meeting, the Super Bowl. We had a, um, spirit week all week. And so I just was really proud of our kids and also our staff. They did a really good job of, of dressing up for the various days, and so that was really kind of cool. Um, had an awesome, uh, site council meeting tonight, and so, uh, we had a lot of people there, and so I think we got a lot of good feedback and, and had some good topics that we discussed. So that was awesome to see. And we've got a really tight ballgame going on. We're, we're up by four points with, uh, not very much time left, so hopefully we'll hang on to that, that maneuver. So that's where he was at, so anyway, good beat up.
Thank you. Okay, is there anything else before we move on? Okay, um, so next up, we have the information and discussion items. Um, first of all, we have a special board meeting, um, this month, February twenty-fifth, at seven AM, and this time, we will be at the high school. So, um, the middle school tour last month was really nice, and it's just really good to be able to get out and see all the teachers and students and see different things in the building. So we look forward to that. Um, next, we have the legislative breakfast, um, coming up March first. I overheard you, Samantha, so I'll let you go on. Um, you might have a change to this.
Yeah, there will be a change in date on that because then the legislators are able to make it. So probably the eighth.
But we'll find out for sure. Okay, thank you. Do you think the location will stay the same?
I assume so.
Okay.
That's April seven.
So then that will change the robotics open houses now, or?
Um, I don't know. I would have to find out from them. They always try to, uh, piggyback on that, to that.
Okay.
But they'll be getting close to, because the week after is when they go to their first competition. So I'll need to, um, I'll just need to find. Once we know a date, then I'll communicate. So the point is, is that whenever we have the local legislative breakfast, we always try to make sure we notify the public because there is a chance, um, if by chance we were to have four board members there, whatever it is, because of that.
Okay, and then we have State of the City coming up on March fourth at Town Square. That's at seven thirty. That'll be catered by Legacy Homestead. And all are welcome to join that if you like.
Yeah, so the State of the City, the chamber puts that on as well. And so, um, the school, the city, and the county are represented at that.
When is that, you said?
Um, the State of the City is March fourth at seven thirty.
It's a Tuesday morning.
Okay, next up, we have our open forum. Um, we've got two open forums this evening. Um, and just to highlight some of the specifics again, the forums need to be, um, turned into the clerk at least ten minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Um, each speaker will have five minutes to speak. And, um, patrons are just to be advised that board members will not entertain questions or discussion and will not take action. According to Kansas law, KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen, the board shall not hear personal complaints concerning any employee or groups of employees of the school district or any person connected with the school district during open session, matters relating to the security of the board, the school, school buildings, or facilities of the information system of the school, or other topics defined as part of KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen. Those items listed for closed or executive session. So like I said, we have two. So first up is Bethany Pham, and if you'd like to come up to the podium. I just start whenever you're ready. Thank you. Is this one for everybody? Okay, sorry. Okay, thank you. Whenever you're ready, yeah, thank you.
Growing up in Paola, Kansas, can feel isolating. There are many brave kids at my school who are LGBTQ, but I really don't know any of their lesbian girls. I felt alone. When I finally came out, I felt ashamed, like I was doing something wrong. I grew up in a world that told me that God wouldn't love me even though my family constantly supported me. During my sophomore year, I went back into the closet just to be accepted. It's a lonely feeling believing you're a bad person just for existing. Tonight, I want to stand here and feel like I matter. Coming from a small Midwestern town, I want you to understand what it's like to be in my shoes. Constantly feeling isolated and alone, never having a full understanding of how, how people around me will feel, always the second guessing if I should be doing what I am, if I ever genuinely feel accepted. Being a part of this community makes me constantly wonder, am I enough? But in many ways, it also saved my life. Having those in my life that have supported me, that in the community within a safe place like school, is a luxury. And I took that for granted until it was taken away. I've met so many people, friends, teachers, that have helped me through this. And when I was bullied, for instance, I went to my principal. He made me feel heard. This gave me the confidence I needed to stand up for myself. Teachers that have made me feel safe have inspired me to do who, to be who I am and have helped me connect with others like me, for what I am grateful for. Still, I want every LGBTQ person in this room, in this community, to feel, to be seen, to be heard, to have a voice, even if it does not matter, even if it is through me because they don't have a safe place speaking up here tonight. I shouldn't have to hold up this sign and beg for people to bring back what should have never been taken away. A sign that says we belong, a sign that is a safe place. Recently, I've heard that this sign should not be needed to make a place a safe place. My friend, who is here tonight, presented this analogy to Mr. Meek and to Mr. Heinz. Let's say you're driving on a road, on a highway, and you need to exit into a different road. You need this sign there to tell you where to get off. If you did not need it, you would just ignore it. It does not hurt you or help you. The people that do not need it, but also for those that do. It makes us, that it's safe and easier to get on the road. So, I agree. It should not matter, and the sign does not need to signal that something is safe. But then again, reality is never perfect. Just because everything does not need those signs does not mean that we do need the significance. If take, if we take away the sign, the road will become abandoned and overgrown, making it dangerous. Now, let's not let every student's safety become a part too dangerous for students to walk down. At the end of the day, it's about the kids who need a safe place to turn when they hear the F slur hurdle down them in the hallway. Or the kids that are constantly getting picked on because of how they dress, how they sound, how they are hanging out with the people around them. This sign matters because when I see it, I know I can breathe. I know I can cry in my teacher's arms when I feel afraid. I know I can hold my partner's hand in public and not get called names. And this should never be too much to ask. So, tonight, I encourage you, encourage you to make the decision in the favor of student safety for these signs to go back up, to tell the kids that you represent, that you value the care about their safety and success. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Valerie Taylor. Again, just whenever you're ready.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My name is Valerie Taylor. I'm eighteen years old and a senior here at Paola High School. I've been a member of our drama department, forensics team, and art club ever since I started high school. I am also bisexual and have been out as such since middle school. I myself can say that I am incredibly lucky to be surrounded by many people who love and support me regardless of any same-sex relation. But I'm here today to speak on behalf of those of us who are not, and hopefully to help you understand why these clear safe zones are so important to us. As I said before, I'm incredibly lucky to have a safe home where I can go, where I can be openly myself. But the reality is that seventy, fifty-seven point four percent of LGBTQ plus youth have reported dealing with parental rejection in some form. This is shown in a report done by the Human Direct Campaign, Human Rights Campaign, where they collected data from over thirteen thousand members of the LGBTQ plus community. Gay children are being abused and kicked out of their homes every day simply because of their sexuality. I refuse to believe that any person in this room here today believes that that is acceptable. Where is one place that these kids are guaranteed to go that is not their homes, is their schools? The biggest argument I hear about these signs is that they suggest that there are unsafe zones in our schools. And while I will not deny that Paola High School is an incredibly safe and supportive school in itself, that does not change the fact that many children feel unsafe regardless of that. I want all of you to put yourselves in the shoes of the children that I mentioned a bit ago. Imagine waking up in your bed, being hated by your own parents for something completely out of your control. Imagine being told that your very existence is disgusting and sinful. Imagine your parents calling you disgraceful and telling you how disappointed they are of what you have become. Now I want you to imagine going to school with all of those words passing around in your head. Sinful, disgusting, disgraceful, disappointing. You walk into class, and on the wall, you see a sign with a symbol that represents who you are and tells you that you are safe. After being shunned by your own family your entire life, imagine how good it feels to see a sign with your flag on it to tell you that you are in a safe zone. This is the reality of so many children at school today. These signs are not just a way for teachers to throw their opinions up on his flip. It's a message for all of those children who are unsafe at home and for all of those children whose parents have restricted them from love. These kids deserve to be loved just as much as the straight kid across from them. They should not feel like a disgrace for how they identify. No one deserves to hear that their identity is a reason to feel shame. I vividly remember the first day that I noticed these signs my freshman year. I've never felt so seen before in my entire life. I immediately knew that these were teachers who would help me with anything I needed. Looking back, I actually performed better academically in these classes that had these safe zones signs up. I felt a stronger mutual respect between me and these teachers, which inspired me, inspired me to make more of an effort in their classes. I developed closer bonds with these teachers, which made it easier for me to reach out when I need to help on any assignments. These are the teachers who made the biggest impact on me in high school, and it was these signs that opened up the doors of comfortability that made it possible. I'll always remember that terrified little girl I was back in middle school who was so afraid of being nothing but a disgrace just because I was gay. I remembered asking my best friend at the time what he would think if I wanted to marry a woman one day. And he would tell me that he would never speak to me again. We argued multiple times because whether or not my identity was something I should be ashamed of. I remember spending those nights frantically flipping through a Bible, sobbing for some chance to be accepted. This is a feeling that I would never wish upon anybody. And if it were possible, I'd love to give that girl a hug and show her one of these signs and tell her that there is somebody out there who will always accept her. For those of you who see these signs as nothing more than a pointless gay shout-out or an attempt to exclude anyone who isn't LGBT, I want to remind you that us gay kids face hate that most of you will never be able to understand. Just last year, I was told by someone that I should start lying about my sexuality because they knew someone who wouldn't, who would have sent a SWAT team to my house just because they believed that my identity was sinful. We continue to see examples of homophobia every single day, which is why we fight so hard for the comfort of knowing that someone in our community understands us. Safe zone signs are the biggest comfort we have seen at the school, and all we ask for is a right to that safety.
Thank you guys. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have our action items. And, um, to approve the new Paola High School Business Course, 3D Animation, and Tammy is gonna tell us a little more about that.
Yeah, so 3D Animation is a new course. They're asking to add, or give additional options to students who, uh, go past that 2D, which we used to call Flash, and then that's kind of, that term has gone away. So, uh, this will be supported with the, the new computers and then, uh, the software that we have. So they're very excited about that, hoping they'll approve it.
Do we have a motion to approve the new Paola High School Business Course, 3D Animation?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the new Paola High School Business Course, 3D Animation. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Six oh, okay, great. Next up, um, approve KASB Recommended Board Policy Updates, BDA, Delete CD, CG, Delete CGI, CNA, DE, DFAC, DFH is a new one, GAE, ICA, IDACA, oh, excuse me, JGFGAA is another new policy, and JGFGVA, and KN.
It's mouthful.
Motion to approve all except for the deletion of CD.
Except what?
Keep CD.
Is this per your recommendations, or that you?
So, so to review, twice a year, in June and in December, um, KASB will, will send, um, policy recommendations as a result of them doing a, a routine review and, um, to make sure that they, they are up to date with, um, with statute. So, um, that's their recommendations. And then I try to put my, um, my commentary, so, um, yeah, I mean, that's, CD is the administrative, administrative line, okay, yeah. So, so what it was on, on CG is they tried to incorporate, um, some of the others. But like I said, that's, I mean, that's up to you all and how we move forward with it. And I would like to tell you that I have all this memorized.
Right.
But I, but I, but I do not. I mean, I, uh, I went back through and looked at it.
I'm still trying to find it, too.
So CD is, so CD would have been a red line version.
It's six.
And so, I mean, it's, it's a short one. And so it's administrative line set. So it's, all administrators are ultimately responsible to the board within the limits of the policy in terms of the job descriptions. Superintendent Administrative, Subordinates have full authority to administer district programs, so.
So Samantha, would you mind just expanding a little bit on your thoughts about that?
Um, I felt like the deletion of it would take the board power away and delegate it to the superintendent. And I wanted to clarify that it is still written under the board. I don't think with the intent by any means of anything, because I actually had spoken to.
Yeah, you did. You, you, you asked me about that.
Does anyone have any other discussion on this specific one?
I mean, is that how, were you kind of interpreting it?
When I read it, um, no, but I mean, policies can be, you know, they're, obviously they'll confront some interpretations, so, um, but, but, I mean, I don't have a problem with it. It's what we currently have.
No, I, I don't have a problem with it either. Um. So how, how do we need to word that to? Either vote on her motion, or?
Please a second, Phil. He's a second still.
But is, is, does that include his recommendations or the way that the KASB presented?
No, it'd just be the way she ordered.
Yeah, it's just how the recommendation is. So if there's any other changes that are wanting to be reported.
So the motion will be to approve it the way it's worded except for the, the CD. I mean, if we keep that, we just strike it out. So it would be to approve KASB Recommended Policy Updates as written. So it'd be, oh my goodness. Let me get my readers on here. BDA, CG, CGI would be deleting it. CNA, DE, EFACs and the rest of that is written. So you would just be deleting, meaning deleting like omitting that CD from, from that motion.
Okay, but there was one that you didn't, a different one, right?
It's not part of this.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, then I second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the recommended board policy updates with the exception of CG.
CD.
I knew that was wrong the moment I said it. Okay, should have crossed it out. Okay, all of those in favor of approving KASB Recommended Board Policy Updates except for CD, please raise your hands. Six oh.
Okay.
This one.
Great. Bottom president, I hope that we go into executive session with now.
Myself and Jimmy.
And Jimmy to discuss negotiations in order to protect privacy interests in negotiating a fair equitable contract and that we return to open session in this room at six forty-six.
Seven.
We have a motion and a second to go to an executive session. All of those in favor, six oh. And what was the time again?
Six twenty-four.
Fifteen minutes.
Six twenty-four.
Fifteen minutes.
Okay, that's all we got.